Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We welcome you to the Pierce County Board of Commissioners work session agenda, January 26, 2012, at 6:00 PM. Would you stand for the prayer? And please.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, God, we thank you for this day that you've given us. And Father, we just ask tonight, as we're gathered here, that, Lord, we'll be about your business, that whatever we say and do will be done decently and will be done in order. And, Father, God, we just want to thank you for how you've blessed our community and the people that we have here in Pierce County. Lord, I just pray that we can continue to provide homes and schools and businesses and work for those who live here. But, Lord, I just ask you, God, to continue to be with our nation. And, Lord, the decisions that have to be made. And, Father, we just ask you to be with our military, God, as they serve our country, especially those who are serving us today, those who have died in the line of defending their nation. But, Lord, be with the families of loved ones that have served our country. And, Father, tonight, I just ask that we just guide our tongues and guide our words. And, God, we love you, and we pray for you, in the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Item number one on our agenda is Edward Cady, Human Resource Director, discussion on overtime and comp policy.
We have a couple of policies we want to bring to the floor tonight for your review. One of them is our overtime and comp policy that we have with the county. Over the past few years, we have a lot of comp time that's been accumulated with county employees. And also, we got with Mr. Buck Figg being with the Georgia Department of Labor to give us some clarity on what designates comp time and what designates overtime, and who's exempt from overtime and who's not exempt from overtime. And you should have got a copy of the policy revisions, hopefully, in your docket. What we're looking to do is remove the terminology of compensatory time from our policy that we have. Currently, we do have a policy that's in place. It's Chapter 34 of the Code of Ordinances. That's there. It actually gives some limitations on how many hours that you can accumulate in the county, especially with annual. That is actually vacation time. You can accumulate a total of 192 hours. With comp time, we've had issues where people had unlimited numbers of comp time they've accumulated over the years and had not used them. And what happens? You get into a legal aspect with that. And between exempt and non-exempt employees, we have it set up where we're looking at changing this. If you are an exempt employee, which is a salaried, we call it a salaried employee. If you make $455 a week, you supervise two or more employees, and you have the ability to hire and fire, then according to the guidelines, you are considered exempt from overtime and comp time. But there are some other, you know, the law's kind of broad. It kind of changes if you go out and you're a department supervisor and you actually go out and work on the job with the guys, then the law states that it kind of changes the dramatics a little bit, and then you are eligible for overtime. So we're going to have to kind of look at job descriptions that we have in the county. That's something we're going to have to revise and bring back before the board and let you review that. But one of the issues we have, and one of the big issues we've had in the last few years is comp time. A lot of people accumulating comp time, a lot of people paying out comp time, and you can accumulate as much comp time right now in the county as you want. And so if we had an individual that left the county and they had 952 hours of comp time, technically, we've got to pay out that 952 hours. And that could definitely put a pinch on the budget that we have. Kind of to give you an idea of what we're looking at, currently with your non-exempt and your exempt employees, your non-exempt employees are those who work 40 hours a week. Anything over 40 hours a week, you pay time and a half. What the recommendation would be to allow the department heads to manage their departments, look at individuals who may have certain overtime of employee that's actually going to work more than what they're supposed to, manage the time and allow the employee to take that time off on Friday or Thursday before the end of that pay period instead of paying them overtime. Okay? And what happens, though, with labor law, if they work more than 40 hours, you're going to have to pay them. You can't get around it. And what happens? We've been just doing comp time, and they've just been building and building and building and building and building, and some of the law has not been followed, even with the comp time policy that we've had in place. So with the department heads and what we're looking at, if you're a department head such as myself, I am a salaried employee. I'm not eligible for comp time, not eligible for overtime. Say, for instance, this week, if I have to take and I have to work more than, say, a 40-hour week, then I should be able to manage my time with my supervisor. I could indicate to my supervisor, hey, I've had to work more than usually the 40 hours, and I want to take a couple of hours off, and that's managed internally. If I work more than 40 hours, I don't get paid for it because I'm a salaried employee. But if you take one who is not a salaried employee, and they work 50 hours, and then the next two weeks, they work another 50 hours, and they take that time and they start banking it up, you've got to pay that employee for that time that he worked beyond that 40-hour work week. But what has happened over the years is employees who have worked more than 40 hours, they've just rolled it over to comp time, and it has built and built and built and built. So those are some of the revisions that we're looking at, that we need to look at, maybe repealing the comp time policy that we do have in accounting, or putting some strict guidelines on that policy and how we want to manage that. Kind of give you just a little bit of what a non-exempt employee are. They work, if they work more than 40 hours in a given work week, they're paid at a rate of one and a half times the employee's regular rate of pay. An exempt employee is an employee who makes at least $455 per week and meets certain FSLA requirements. They are exempt from overtime pay. But these employees for which they may apply are those that are managing the enterprise, managing the company or department, they're directing two or more of their employees, and they have the authority to hire or fire. And these employees are usually department heads or supervisors. And so we're just kind of looking at putting some restraints on how we do comp time in the county and be sure that we are in compliance with the labor laws to ensure we don't want somebody to come back and say, well, I've worked beyond my 40 hours, and I wasn't compensated for what I worked, and then we have to go back and pay penalties and interest over a period of time. So that's just one area we need to look at. I've also included in the revisions that we're looking at on comp time, a lot of employees have still got comp time built up in the county. And what we're recommending is they can continue to keep that comp time for at least a year. If that comp time is available, they need to try to use that comp time, and if it's not used during that year, then we're going to need to look at paying for them and get that cleared out. So we just don't need to, you know, continue to have that on the books. The biggest thing that we've got to look at with overtime, Commissioners, is we've got to manage it. You know just as well as I do, and I'm not saying this is happening in the county, this is just a broad statement, that people can abuse the system if they choose. They can come in, if we don't have a time clock system where we come in and we actually clock in and clock out, somebody can come up to them, and they're writing their time down, and say, well, I actually worked 45 hours this week. How are you going to dispute that? You're not going to dispute it, because if they put that 45 hours down on that time sheet and turn it in to you, you've got to pay that five hours of overtime to that employee. And so not only with the policy we're looking at, but we're also looking at the ability that we can track attendance, track the number of hours that people are actually working. I worked for another government identity here in Pierce County some years ago, and we had put in a time clock system where employees would actually, it's a biometric system, where they'd actually clock in and out, and we did it with the fingers. It was a fingerprint biometrics clock system. That way, you could get away from the buddy system, because if you clock in with a PIN number, or if you just take a card and come in and scan in, you could actually get somebody to clock in for you or clock out for you. There have been instances in other counties outside of us where people have done that. They've actually had somebody clock in for them, and they were at home watching TV, or they were at home in bed that night. And we're not saying that's happening in Pierce County. We just want to be able to better manage the time, because when you work more than 40 hours, somebody's going to pay for it. John Q Taxpayer is the one who's going to pay for that. The best thing to do is, the success of this policy would be to manage it, and it has to be managed with our department heads. They're going to have to overlook and ensure that those people are working their 40 hours and not working over 40 hours. If an employee is having to work over 40 hours every week, then we need to review that job and see why they're having to work that 40 hours. I'm going to kind of open it up for any questions that you may have. Currently, right now, on vacation, they can accumulate 192 hours just annual leave. That's all that we can accumulate on vacation time.
How has the comp time been recorded in the past? Or has it been?
Usually, people will take the time sheet, and they'd fill in that they worked their hours, and then they would put over to the side that they had four hours of comp time, where you couldn't really verify that they really worked comp time. Then you had some people, and this is the question that's been asked, some people have asked, well, I've got 342 hours of comp time. I pull up the payroll system, and I look in our payroll system, and I don't show them 342 hours of comp time. Well, they've got it written down on a piece of paper in a notebook somewhere that that's 342 hours of comp time. That's not really a good way to keep up with comp time or keep up with the overtime that we have. So it's basically been whatever lay right down on a piece of paper, that's basically how it's been recorded ourselves.
In other words, it wasn't nobody minding. They just do it the way they wanted to do it. Whatever the manner, who's supposed to be minding it? I mean, who's supposed to be over it? I mean, come and go with me, please.
Well, you supervise. Department heads are supposed to, would have been in the past, people that's supposed to oversee that, and obviously, that's what we're addressing at this time, because we have found out that that probably needs some attention.
Yes, sir. And it's one thing we really need to do, especially talking about our non-exempt employees, if they're working over 40 hours, then the department head needs to manage that, because it's going to reflect on the budget. If I take in this year, say, for instance, I got 370 hours of comp time I build up, well, I didn't burn any of it this year, but we roll over into 2013, and I come and say, I'm going to sell my 313 hours of comp time. That is unbudgeted money. We have to pay for it.
I've got a question. The county pays overtime and comp time. Am I hearing that right?
You're hearing overtime.
You can decide which one you want to use.
Well, I heard him mention 45 hours. Is that employee, can he get that 45 hours, 5 hours overtime?
If you work more than 40 hours and you are non-exempt, then we have to pay for that overtime at time and a half by law.
And if that same man works, say, 15 hours overtime, 10 hours of that he can put on comp time?
Policy is, as it speaks right now, they can accumulate it to comp time. We don't, we haven't been paying the overtime on some of it.
To me, that sounds like you asking for trouble right there.
Yes, sir. I agree with you. It's kind of been an open-end policy. We've not really had a more defining policy in the county. It's a blanket policy is basically what it is. And when it was first initiated, we didn't have the issue, but as time progresses, it's real easy. I know when I worked for CSX down in Jacksonville, we had our salaried employees, and we had our, then we had those who were non-salaried. And then every once in a while, you'd have people who were claiming overtime, 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 and they weren't actually on the job. We had no way of recording them. So as technology progressed, we also put in the biometric systems down there, and they clocked in through their systems, and we knew exactly when they come in and when they went out. Basically, right now, we're just, you're just taking, if I come up to you, Mr. Randy, and say, I've worked 30 hours of overtime this week, and it's on my time sheet, where did you spend that 30 hours of overtime? Unless we have a proper way of collecting that time and showing where it is, you've got to take the word of that employee.
Just to make a long story short and to answer your question a little bit, that's the reason why Mr. Cady's bringing these issues to the front tonight, so we could change that.
It sounds like a, it sounds terrible to me.
I've just said in the payroll side this past year and actually moving into HR, and I can see that this is a, could be a very interesting budgetary item for us. It's an unbudgeted item. If, you know, if you've got 30 people in the county that's got 100 hours of comp time, and then all of a sudden, they all decide to sell them at one time, you've got to pay for it.
Well, in direction of the staff, y'all will create a policy and bring it back to us, is that what we're asking for tonight?
Well, yeah, we have a policy right now that is before you, in your packet, and it basically addresses, if you're a non-exempt employee and you work over 40 hours, we'll pay you overtime. If you are an exempt employee, you do not get overtime, and you can take that time, comp time, during your pay period, but you cannot carry it on, and you cannot sell it, you can't carry it over. You have to use it during that pay period. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
We met with the Department of Labor?
Yes, we met with the Department of Labor for a couple of hours on that. And we want y'all to, you can read over it, study it, and y'all can pass it on to the BLC meeting on the 7th, and in the meantime, if you have any more questions, you can write those down and give us those questions at the final meeting where you do a final vote on it. And we're just wanting this to be passed on to the Board of Commissioners for final approval. And you'll have two weeks, or wide-eyed two weeks, to look over it and see if you want to make any changes.
You're actually just going to be?
How many we have right now?
How many?
Comp time, people with comp time right now?
I have several.
Very high, right?
Yes.
What are we going to do about them? First of all, they've got to have correct documentation. If you've got documentation, then it's clean-cut and dried. If you don't have documentation, it's not a valid request, in my opinion.
You've got to have.
I might have to, I might have to yield to our attorney over here and let him give us some advice.
Yeah.
If I come, if I come up with 300 hours of time of comp time, then I'm expecting a check.
You'd better show me where you earned it.
Well, you give them a year to use it.
Yeah, we're giving them a year to use it.
A year to use it, I thought. After that, you're going to have to.
Year to use it.
What about, do they, they have to documentate, furnish documentation?
Well, if the, 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 the record office has got that much time, I think, we may have, we may be bound by what we've got on the record.
See, some of the issues that we're having here is?
If they got something, they come up and claim it, and that's difficult, but the office, I think, has a record of what.
Yes, sir. We have a record of all the comp time and all the annual leave and sick. We have that on record. But the issue comes in if somebody's, they have not turned it in over the years or turned it in on the paper.
Well, that's a different issue.
Yeah.
That's a different, I'm talking about.
What we got now?
If it's documented.
What has been documented in this office. We're going to have a hard time denying that, even, but there may not be an official record on that, or may not be. But you're saying that they got something, they hold it back.
Yes, sir.
That's an issue. They may lose that, I think.
Yes, sir.
Unless they can prove it.
And see, that's one of the issues we're getting into is just.
But this is probably what you need to be doing to bring that into the line, even though it may cost, it may hit you pretty hard this year, but.
Well, you've got to straighten it out sometime, and that's what tonight's all about. We've got another issue, too, that's following along a line where we have to correct things that have not been set up correctly in the past, and so we're just asking for y'all to pass this on to a final.
I mean, this has come up several times, this issue of comp time, for 10 or 12 years since I can remember back. It would come up, and we were going to do something about it. The board never had passed a policy on it.
And, you know, and this, this policy has been abused in the past.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, and we move on with, move on.
Set a motion, got a second.
Yes, sir.
In favor, I'm signing the fine. I'm in the eye of the hand. Yeah, you and Robert, nothing wrong about me and the paper, because I don't have no comp time. Don't have no comp time. Okay, item number two, Edward Cady, Human Resource Director, discussion on procedures for the purpose of declaring county property as surplus and scraps.
Commissioners, again, we have another item before you tonight. We want to talk about surplus equipment and inventory. We don't have a clear policy on how to dispose of surplus inventory that we do have in the county. We have put together a memorandum that was delivered out on January 3rd from Mr. Paul Christian, our county manager, to the department heads, asking them to follow this policy. What we're doing is asking you tonight to review it and also to give your affirmation in regards to it. Basically, it puts some controls in place, not only, especially on my part, I can talk about the technology side, is we have a lot of surplus inventory with computers, computer parts, computers that we don't use anymore, that we have stacked in the old Strickland Avenue. And I've kind of hacked and took and robbed Peter to pay Paul to manage all I can, these other computers that we have, so I've kind of used everything that I can use of them. And we're at the point now that we need to actually surplus those. And basically, what I'm asking on our certain procedure, if we have surplus equipment in the county, whether it's IT, it's a capital asset program, it's through Public Works, it's through the Fire Department, wherever it may be, that if they have something that needs to be surplus, that they actually take and place it on a letter of memorandum stating the quantity they have, the description of what they have, inventory numbers that they do have, and the location and that person, they must sign that letter of intent and submit it actually to our finance department. We're actually working on a capital asset program now. We currently do not have a capital asset program in the county. We have some high-dollar equipment in the county that has not been inventoried, and we're working right now to inventory all that equipment that we have, so that at the end of the year, when we print our balance sheet, we can show our depreciation on our equipment. After that information has been given, the finance department will tag that as being surplus and scrapped in the system. They will give that information to the county clerk. She will provide that information on an agenda, the work session, for you to review. And from that point, after you review that, you will have to approve surplus in that equipment before we can do anything with it, whether we sell it, whatever we do with it. All surplus in any county must be approved by the governing board, okay? Once that's placed and been approved and given to the county clerk, she will post it on our county website and in our legal organ for a period of no less than two weeks we will advertise it. There's also other sites that we can do online that we can advertise it if we need to. From that point, we can take solicited bids, you can have a public auction, however you see fit, as Commissioners of working with that surplus equipment. If you take bids on it, they'll be opened at the next available Board of Commissioner meeting where the Board of Commissioners will award it. So if we have surplus equipment, we take bids, it will come before the board, and you will open them during a Board of Commission meeting, okay, publicly. Now, there's some items of notation on there. It says, should a department wish to salvage useful components from surplus equipment, such as components that are to be removed before the request? If there's parts that they, they need to use, say, off, they got an old dump truck they want to get rid of. If there's something they need off the dump truck, they need to make the notation, they can pull that off and use that part. They'll need to make that notation on it. Revenue that is attained from the transfer or sale of the surplus item must, those funds must be deposited into the general fund. All monies that recede in, all sales of equipment of the county must be placed into the general fund for accounting purposes. Now, we do know that there are costs that are incurred in the disposal of that scrap, you know, the scrap items and heavy equipment. And so whatever monies that are taken in for the sale of that surplus equipment, we have to remember to take out the charges it did to surplus it. So if you sold it for $1,000 and it cost you $200 to actually sell it, then, you know, you've got $800 in general fund, you have to note that. You want to be sure that you note everything in your capital asset program. If somebody comes in off the street and says, I need to know, we bought a dump truck, or we bought a computer two years ago, where's that computer at? We need to be able to provide that information. That's through inventory and through a capital asset program.
Edward, I want to stop at this time and go back and address an issue that is responsible for bringing this to the board. Several months ago, as I was visiting the Public Works compound, excuse me, we're trying to get ready to build a new building and clean up that area. There was an excavator out there that it was, the tracks were off, and A.J. Griffith, the director, and Ken and I were out there looking over this stuff, because I asked them to meet me out there. And for all intents and purposes, the items we were looking at were junk. There was two trucks, two tanks, and an excavator. None of them could run. The tracks were off, the excavators, the trucks, and the other stuff was just, to me, I thought it was scrap. So I asked the directors to address those issues and to dispose of those issues, those articles, and put the money, bring the money to Lynn, and so they could put it in the, in the bank. About a month or so after that, I found out, one of the Commissioners now were carrying on conversation, and found out that those items had been sold instead of scrapped. And so I immediately called Mr. Griffith and asked him, and he said he did sell those. He had priced, gotten, equipment companies come by and give him bids on those, and it was like $20, $200, and the scrap was about $3,000, somewhere around that.
Way higher than that.
Do a?
You had a check way higher than that.
Well, I know, but the scrap price was like $3,000. And he sold it to a gentleman who later I found out was kin to him for $3,800. So he thought he was doing a good thing by getting more money for it instead of scrapping it, but at that time, I told him, I said, well, you can't do that. I wasn't under the impression that you were going to sell those. I thought you were going to scrap them. So at that time, Mr. Cady and I wrote up, reprimanded to Mr. Griffith on that. Later on, Ken Justice, he sold his items, as A.J. did, and he took the money and put it in the Hacklebarnie Fire Department bank account. So we reviewed it. After I found out what was going on, we reviewed it. We determined that we needed a policy to make sure that everybody understands what to do with surplus items, so in the future, no matter whether it's junk, that's the reason why in this write-up it's got slash scrap, whether it's scrap or whether it's equipment or computers or whatever it is, doesn't make any difference whether it's junk or whether it's what it is. It has to come before the board, and they have to declare it surplus, and then it goes through the process. And that's why this is brought for tonight, and I want to make sure everybody was clear as to why we were introducing a policy on scrap, so everybody knows.
And it basically gives a clear directive to your department heads on what they can and can't do, because if you don't have a policy in place, what's the policy? So this kind of gives a directive of what we do as a county. So this kinda gives a directive of what we do as a county, kinda puts some, some controls in place.
And just to add a note to that, we're finding stuff, I've been here six and a half months, we're finding stuff on a regular basis, just like we've been talking about tonight on different, on like the comp issues. We're, we're going through everything with a fine tooth comb, and we find something that's not right, doesn't make sense, it's, it's, it needs a new procedure, this is what we're doing. We're gonna bring it to you, we're gonna ask y'all to change it, vote on it, and then we're gonna be doing a training session for all of our department heads, so that they're up to date on all of the changes and all the rules and regulations of what they're supposed to do. Because right now, we've got people that don't really know what to do in certain circumstances, and this is what we're trying to, trying to correct.
Well, I can't speak for all the commissioners, but I certainly wasn't satisfied with waiting for salesmen.
Right, I understand.
And I know this is reasonable policy, don't about.
Right.
But I suppose, up about it, and I'm certainly not happy.
And you weren't by yourself. I had several commissioners, after I relayed what was going on, and they talked to me about it, they were not happy about that, and rightfully so. And so we're taking corrective action to make sure that we, we eliminate these kind of problems in the future.
Edward.
Yes, sir.
You go back to the minutes of nineteen eighty-three to nineteen eighty-six, when I was on that board. This was brought up, how you could sell scrapped equipment and machinery from Pierce County.
At the time, we asked Lynn Altman, our county clerk, if we had a proper order of how to do things, and she could not find anything on record.
Eighty-three to eighty-six, huh?
Nineteen eighty-three to eighty-six, when Forrest Swift was chairman. I know at that time, I was on the board, too, and we would get sealed bids on, we'd advertise it, get sealed bids on items. And no commissioner or any employee was allowed to bid on those. That was, I recall, in eighty-three to eighty-six, I can't tell you which year, but Lord Toote and myself and Forrest Swift has got things in there telling you how you can bid.
What we're looking at, too, is we're working, I've been working with our county clerk, trying to put some systems together that when we pass policies and resolutions, so those things are passed, are put on our MUNICODE, is what happens a lot of times in the past. Stuff would be written down on paper, filed in a book, nobody knew it was there. So you, right now, you can go out to the Pierce County website and go to MUNICODE and see all the items that have been posted on the MUNICODE that's been passed by the commissioners over the last twenty, thirty years. I went back through the MUNICODE, I went back and looked at what's been passed, and there is no mention of surplus equipment on how we sell it. So that's what brought this policy about, to do that. So if there's some minutes there, maybe we can locate that and maybe look at doing it as an addendum to this. It hopefully should be the same here, because basically, you have a control in place, you gotta declare it, and it goes before the board.
It's basically the same.
Well, another thing we need to add to this, as we correct the problem, obviously, if there was something in the past, it never was passed on to the supervision or department heads, because nobody knew anything about it.
But as a recommendation, we need to have some type of controls in place now, so that we can protect the employee and how they do their job.
But, Mr. Paul, I understood that this track hoe, that's all we're talking about, was drove without the track on it to the county workshop. So therefore, it was running, okay? Then I understand the man that bought it bought the parts, and it was worked on at the county workshop.
Mr. Griffith, you want to respond to that?
Yes, sir.
Because I wasn't there when all that took place.
I'll go by this, too. There were some bids on that machinery, more than one bid. And Caterpillar Yancey was one of them, and I got the bid, the way we got that. I think Enterprise bitted on it. I hadn't followed that up, but I knew it did, but I ain't been there, but I have got the Caterpillar bid, was faxed to me. The equipment was sold approximately, I'll get the true bid for you, I'm saying, maybe, it was sold for thirty-eight hundred fifty dollars, what it sold for, plus this guy had to pay for all the parts. Pierce County didn't pay for any parts. Got papers to show most of it, and all of us seen them. And to load it on a truck, or whatever to move it, we had to put things, you had to buy these parts, the front wheel and everything was totally gone. I mean, you couldn't even do, couldn't even load it unless you did this. So, and I told the man, I said, "You're gonna have to pay for all this if, and we put the pins and all in it." Took me and Riley probably three or four hours, and they come and got it. But it, the truth about it, we was hoping it'd stay together till we get it on the truck, so all that was gone.
Was it running?
The machine was got it running, but the fuel pump was leaking bad, you can see that, but anyway, there's some things we did, but we got it running. We had to get it running to load it on it. But if you want to follow this up real good, a man with Yancey come looked at it, let him tell you, all the cylinders leaking, he can look at that, he can tell you the story way better than I can. But it was a piece of junk. But the engine, I got the engine running, we run the engine, because the fuel pump was on it bad, and we tightened it up enough, got it running, and loaded on the truck.
Any more questions, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Would you like to see the bid from Yancey?
No. I don't know how much the bid was.
How much?
Does it not say?
What was the value of this machine, new? What kind of machine was it?
Twenty-two hundred. It was twenty-two hundred, the bid from Yancey was twenty-two hundred.
No, it was, I really think Yancey was twenty-three fifty.
Twenty-three fifty. What was the age of that piece of equipment, Agent?
Uh, it's no, maybe in the seventies, I'm guessing. It's a six-nineties, Randy would probably know, it's a real old.
How much did it weigh?
I have to guess, I'm gonna say somewhere around thirty-seven thousand pounds. And I priced the time it was sold to scrap metal, if it had brought nine dollars per hundred, less, all the oil on it and the dirt would be knocked off of it. So you can figure with a pen and a T, approximately what it brought.
If this excavator was running, blunt place across the river in Hoboken, said this excavator was worth anywhere from ten to twelve thousand dollars.
I don't think that would be true. I don't think that'd be true, so. I think you got it.
I don't have any more.
Well, it definitely wasn't running when I saw it.
Well, it took some work to get it running, but now Riley overhauled that engine maybe eight or ten years ago. It was a while. It's been a long time since, but he rebuilt it one time there.
Well, this is recent.
But I got, I got it running, and it's been setting up. That machine actually hadn't been running very little, and I've been there five and a half years, very little in the five and a half years. Anybody thought it wasn't the bucket.
Of course, if we had to do it over again, we'd do it differently, but I'll have to say that I'll take blame for that, too, for not following up, you know, a little bit closer and making sure that they did what we thought we were supposed to do with it, even though we still didn't surplus it. It wasn't done what I thought we was gonna do with it either, but the whole, the whole process was, was, was not followed.
Yeah, I would like to say this, because when we were doing all this, everybody was in a hurry, but the only thing I didn't know about the rules, regulations, all I knew, everybody told me you could sell it. Said, "Just go ahead and watch and get," I got some bids on it, but what I'm saying is, they said, "You know, just go ahead and sell it." Okay, all the rest of them did the same thing. I showed a check for mine, but I'm just telling you, whatever. I showed a check for it, and I showed the bid on it.
Right.
Then I got rid of it. I thought that was what everybody wanted to do. I thought I did good, because I, it brought a lot more money with scrap on it. Because the guy had to pay. Hmm, I'm gonna say, you sold my paper, I can get them close to a thousand dollars just for parts, he must have get, just to load it. He had that on it, he had those.
Mr. Justice, do you want to come tell them what, what went on with the truck?
Yes, sir. Two thousand and four, Pierce County consolidated the fire departments. Prior to that, the fire departments were to furnish the trucks. The county would furnish the knockers. We had several pieces of equipment. Mr. Christian suggested we get rid of, scrap them out. And we got looking at it, actually, the individual departments on those, right here. There was an original contract signed in eighty-three, that every single fire department signed with the county, showing who did what. Simply puts in there that the stations, the fire departments at that time, had to furnish the trucks, the county would furnish the knockers to go on them. And we took, when I came in in July of oh-five, the understanding that I had is that we would continue to use that equipment until such time as the county replaced it with their own equipment. And so everything that has been bought since that date has been titled to Pierce County Board of Commissioners, no question. These trucks were taken out of service, they were property of Southside Fire Department Independent, as well as Northside Fire Department Independent and Bearview Fire Department Independent. There had been some question, when we assumed, the fire department, that we assumed liability, clearly states in that that we already had the liability, we had to provide the insurance for the trucks, because the trucks were owned by the department. Two thousand and five, when the commissioners actually, or two thousand and four, when they actually consolidated, there was no mention of anything about assets or equipment. Since that time, we have a fire, the Southside Fire Station that we just acquired, there is two trucks right now still owned by the Independents, and that's Hackabarnie, has a tanker, and Sunset Fire Department has a knocker still in service. Southside also had one, but it was given in lieu of Hackabarnie and a fifty percent payout for the rescue truck. Here's letters from the fire departments to the state of Georgia, resolving their independence, as well as to the commissioners, asking for the fire departments to become under the county. Nowhere or none of the fire chiefs remember anything, there's nothing on record showing any of the assets wherever owned by Pierce County. I did discuss it with the county manager, Mitch Bowe and Neil Bennett. Also, the fire chief voted to sell the equipment, and we placed that money in the fire department of Hackabarnie, which has a checking account. All money has been kept up with, it has paid for classes and meals within the fire department during our training. So as far as I can tell, there was never any ownership of the county equipment. I do know the county has surplus policies, because we surplused and ambles, where we took bids, advertised, and it went to the highest bidder. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, to say the least, I think that, you know, there's, there's nothing that's ever been definite and consistent. And so hopefully with this, if y'all will approve to move this to the Board of Commissioners tonight, we can end this long era of not knowing. Mr. Katie, you got anything else to add to that?
No, sir, none of this time.
We need to make a motion now. I make a motion that we go ahead with this surplus and scrap resolution. Second. All in favor of I signing the fine eye? In the eyes of the. Item number three is Edward Katie, Human Resource Director, discussion on Pierce County's travel policy.
I don't know who Edward Katie is, but he's taking a lot of y'all's time tonight. We've got a travel policy, I think this has been brought before the board some months ago. I think there were some modifications, revisions that needed to be made to the policy. Kind of yield the floor to the commission at this time for any questions.
Last time y'all, this was brought before the board, y'all had, y'all didn't like certain parts of it. And Lynn, do you, can you point out the changes that we made in that?
Yes, sir. Number six, we took out guests, and we actually added number seven, where it says the county officials, we, uh, constitutional officers, department heads, and other management positions that are required to be persons of other governments and professional associations in which the exchange of information will require to be benefited to the county, when such a change is accorded, may be deemed appropriate to pay for the cost of meals as a guest of the county. We added a guest line to it.
What about number six? What'd you change about number six?
I took out the, actually, I took out what's actually into number seven, because that, in number six, we had that we would not pay for any guests of the commissioners, which took that out and made an entirely different line item.
In other words, you're not gonna pay if I take any people out to eat?
No, sir, we are gonna pay if you take some of them out to eat.
But it's got to be deemed appropriate.
It's got to be, you think to poke it?
I think where the question, I think where the question came up is when people were going out of town, to classes or being certified, and they had to take their family to make sure that the county taxpayers were not paying for your daughter and her boyfriend, or your son and his girlfriend, and, and the aunts and uncles and all this kind of stuff that you, you know, you had to, you know, if you take your wife, that's one thing, but you can't take, you can't have a family reunion.
And a lot of it was about, they just have a list of meetings that they can go to, and they just go down and kick 'em on and go. That's what a lot of people complain about, if you pay a good little money, they just go, "Oh, I'm gonna go to that, I'm gonna go to that," and just go and go and go. They're paying for it. That's what a lot of them do.
Well, as a result of our budget process this year, the travel has been scrutinized extremely close, and a lot of people are not taking trips that they used to take. One thing that we are encouraging employees to make sure that they take their certification classes, so that they can be, keep up there and be certified in what they're supposed to be doing. Other than that, each meeting that takes place, there will be conversation on each one of those.
Lot of times, too, people don't realize that there are certain classes that we are required by law to take. I mean, we just don't go to every class we need.
Well, I'm not saying everybody did, but I know they were complaining about some of them that were just, you know, "I'm gonna go to this beach, I'm gonna go to that, I'm gonna spend my time traveling." Some of them were doing that.
Well, if you spot any of that, you let me know.
How about like he's talking about another government, eh? I don't think he's talking about, I don't think he's talking about Pierce County.
No, I haven't, I haven't. And again, commissioners, this is written policy, it kinda gives directives, and as time progresses, if we need to do addendums, we can do that, but it kinda makes clarity of what we can and cannot do, and again, it protects the employee.
One other item, we will be bringing approximately about forty new policies to the board, so y'all will be receiving policies along as time goes on for y'all to revise and vote on. But these, unlike these, these we have to do immediately. The rest of the policies will come out a little slower, because we're, Crystal Boyett, our Director of Finance, will be overseeing those and making sure that every- be overseeing those and making sure that every T is crossed and every I is dotted, and so we won't have to bring them back for revisions. These that we're presenting tonight, if we do find something that is, that requires revision on it, we will bring it back to the board, but the ones in the future, we hope that that will not be the case.
Paul, I think, too, when we get this, all these policies amended and updated, each department head needs to have an updated yearly book, and needs to be signed off saying, I've read the updates in it.
Yes, sir.
The biggest problem we got now is that nobody's aware of the actual policies, the handbook. Like Mike Street may have mentioned several years ago, that the book we had had not been updated in twenty-five years. And every department, as we change department heads, if somebody else comes in, he needs to sit down and read that thing and sign off on it. Somebody needs to follow up, make sure he's aware of everything in that handbook.
Those classes will be starting very soon, in the next few weeks. It also, Crystal Boyett, our Director of Finance, will be putting out a monthly budget manual that has, that will be unlike what they've had in the past. Each month, they get an update. They know exactly what's in their budget, and anytime they have to buy anything, it goes to our purchasing, our Director of Purchasing, which will be Amy Hitt, and nobody can buy anything unless it goes through Amy, unless it's, they have checked out their budget and opened it up and read it and says, do I have the money to buy this? Then they get to submit it for approval. Just because they submit it, that doesn't mean they can buy it. It's got to go through a process.
And Mr. Dixon, we're starting what we call New Employee Orientation. New employees that are becoming in, we're actually going to go through an orientation program then with two or three hours. We're going to go over all the policies in the county, medical, dental, everything that we have, and at the end of that orientation, as we give them the handbooks, they will sign a piece of paper affirming that they have been notified.
Right. Well, you know, and back to the old government, now we switched to the new government. But before, where we're at now, every January, we may appoint somebody new over that department. He went in there, went to work without being aware of the policies.
Yes, sir.
The handbook, as well, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that also is, will be brought up for change in the next meeting, I believe, because since you have switched to a county manager type of government, the commission does not approve the department head positions, renew those every year, and that needs to be, Mr. Katie can address that.
You passed a resolution a couple of years ago. I think it's when the past chairman was here on appointees, department appointees. There were some appointees that were made by the chairman at that time without the authorization of the board. You passed a resolution at that time that the board would vote on those appointees. Since you do have a county manager form of government, the management has changed, the form of government has changed, and you'll need to go back and rescind that resolution that you passed a few years ago, so that would give Mr. Christian the authority to make those appointees. That's, that's part of the OOCG law that's been introduced this legislation.
Thank you.
And my appointments will be based on, I don't really like the idea of somebody having to reappoint a department head every year. If I was a department head and had that hanging over my head every year, I believe that freaked me out a little bit. It's gonna be done on evaluations. Each department head will be evaluated by me, and we will do that once a year, and that's how we're gonna handle that part.
I make a motion to move forward with a new Pierce County travel policy. Have a second.
Second.
All in favor of I signify an aye?
Aye.
Aye. I need to kind of figure that, the travel policy. Discussion on Insurance Policy for Jerry Davis, Board of Tax Assessor. Anybody have any comment?
I missed it. What? I was busy talking. I was talking, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. What'd you say?
Discussion on Insurance Policy for Jerry Davis, Board of Tax Assessor.
I think today, I also got another email that we were paying, I believe, Mr. Katie, you'll have to step up to address that. I believe we were paying his retirement also?
Yes, sir. We were being, the county's been paying a one percent mandatory retirement on Mr. Davis since he's served on the board, and also Mr. Thomas, who had served on the Tax Assessor Board also, they had been paying the retirement. I checked the records, and those were the only two individuals I saw on any of the boards that the county was contributing towards a retirement. And so I know y'all had brought up a motion a couple of weeks ago referring, reversing the medical insurance coverage, and felt that if you were going to reverse the medical insurance coverage, you also needed to address the county retirement plan.
Policies, same old, part-time, right?
Well, as y'all mentioned the other night, if you're gonna do one, you need to do it to all, and y'all decided that you didn't, you didn't want to do that, so y'all need to address, you need to rescind those items, both of those items, and send it on to the VOC for approval.
Minimum requirements to contribute towards retirement plan that we have a policy is an employee must be employed at least thirty hours per week. And that's policy.
There it is. With that information, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we rescind it. Second, Mr. Chairman. All in favor of I signify an aye?
Aye.
Any ayes have it? Okay, item number five. This discussion, Chairman, Discussion on Grading at the NFC Project by the Pierce County Public Works. Does anybody have any problems with that?
There's only one thing we need. We need a written agreement from, saying that we're not responsible if we hit any of those lines up there. And I've discussed this with the chairman, and he's fine with that. Just wanted to make sure, because we didn't put those lines down. We don't have any ass belts on those, and they said that the lines were buried deep enough where we wouldn't hit them, but I still need a letter holding us harmless on any damage that takes place, and I believe the chairman has agreed to that. Is that correct, Chairman? And I believe it's gonna save, how much money did you say that might save, Chairman?
Just a hundred and eighty thousand dollars to pay for a mile. I don't know how much is that.
I mean, just the grading.
Just the grading. It'll save you probably five or six hundred thousand.
And let me go on record saying the staff is ready, willing, and able, and more than happy to help the chairman with his NFC project, and will be glad to do that because it's saving the taxpayers money.
Now, here, a motion.
Much, much, Mr. Chairman, let's move forward with the grading of NFC project with the
Now, this is on the project one for two days a week.
Yes, sir, but that's with approval and the signatures holding the county blame us of anything other.
Right. Have a second. Was there any grading in the contract of the, that we had? Bill, I don't really, I don't really know. He was supposed to be here this week, but he didn't, he didn't make it, so he's to be here next week, so I don't know. We haven't paid it out yet, so.
Could I, could I say something to help you there, Paul? Can I say something about the NSC building?
Yeah.
We have been up here this week with, and met with the people that's gonna put it with hair and see, put up the stops and everything. They are gonna be, probably some of it, maybe three foot or better, it's going to be cut down. And they're gonna have their man, it's been, it's named, oh, they got a milk man, is that, do you call him Mitch?
Yeah.
Okay. The name Milk Man, he knows where, I think, all the lines are. And this is not gonna be an easy job, and we're gonna probably, one spot in it, the run, the first phase they want to do is where Georgia Power run the power underground and get power to the, it's probably gonna take maybe, I'm gonna guess fifty loads of dirt there, but we're gonna have to tear some out, move some way down, and it's not just that, but on the back part, all your pavement around the front and everything, all that's gonna have to be tore out. Every bit of, we got to rip it all out. But on that, if you were trying to do what's right, you could take, we could break that up, haul it somewhere and get it, chip it up somewhere, and we use it for the county. It works good for those, and there gonna be quite a bit of that.
Okay, thank you, AJ.
Chairman, next second. All in favor of I signify an aye?
Aye.
Item number six is Georgia Assessor, Recreation Board Director, Discussion.
Good evening. We're revisiting the lighting issue. We covered this back July twenty-third, I think it was July twenty-third of two thousand and ten, or two thousand and eleven, and baseball season's right around the corner. In your packets, you have three bids, one from Musco, one from Carter Electric, one from Harold Smith Electric. The bids have five alternatives, four alternatives, in regards to, for, in regards to Jeff Moosejow's baseball field, which is one field that's in question out of the four, and I just need that field lit, one, for primary reason, keep the kids safe, and we use that field pretty regularly, and that is our prized field. Aesthetically lost.
Yes, we got a good crowd here tonight. Jordan, just kind of explain to them what happens once dark sets in on that field.
The, I'm telling them the poles, the poles have scoliosis, so they're crooked as a question mark, just due to age. As you know, wood poles, they bend and turn. The lights, just from, that complex was built in the seventies, so it's a very old complex. The wiring's very old, the lighting fixtures are very old, and when you flip the switch, Mr. Harold Smith's here, from, he's one of the bids, he's seen it, the lights will come on, some of the lights will come on. There's approximately, I think, fifty-four fixtures on that field, maybe half of them worked, but they'll come on, some will go off, and it's just like, someone's like a twinkling Christmas tree, and you can't have that for the children because there's so many dark spots on the field, and it's not safe for the kids, and that's our main priority. And that field was originally three hundred feet. We brought the rear, the outfield fence in, a hundred feet to two hundred feet, so I still have four poles with approximately twenty-five fixtures sitting out at three hundred feet, so they're lighting approximately a hundred feet of dead space. And so now we're faced with the, the decision of several alternatives of patching it, getting by this season, and then addressing it again, or completely gutting the system with the light fixtures, putting up new poles, new fixtures, and doing that route.
And your funding source for that?
SPOSS two thousand and eight.
I think everybody needs to make sure we all heard that correctly.
SPOSS two thousand and eight.
Because it's SPOSS two thousand and eight, it's not coming out of the general fund.
Mr. Harold. Second. And I'll answer any questions y'all have as far as technical or about the bids.
And for, I'll answer, Mr. Harold was the lowest bid.
It does need, it does need I don't really have anything to present, other than I do have the photometrics of the fields and everything to show you what, what you'll have when you get through. We are talking about concrete poles with steps and baskets, and Mr. Boyett understands what I'm talking about, but that means that you'll be able to climb these poles in the future and go repair your lights. You, Jordan's actually young enough, he can climb them himself. He's been out on all the poles out there now, but you can hire somebody, they don't have to rent a piece of equipment to come fix your lights. If you've got one light out, you can climb the pole, change that light bulb, your lights are all back working. It'll all be up to the current national standards of your hurricane loads, your wind loads, and of course, your lighting is fifty-foot candles on the infield, thirty-foot candles on the outfield, which is your current standards for high school baseball. That is more than adequate for all your safety concerns, and certainly when you have your tournaments like Mr. Sasser's trying to have, it makes a good presentation when people come, they don't mind coming back. Nobody wants to go play where it's dark, and right now, your, your fields are in disrepair. That's, that's more a matter of time than anything anybody's done right or wrong. Well, I think y'all all understand that, when you, those are, those are the issues that you gentlemen have to deal with all the time with everything. We, I certainly understand that. I appreciate all y'all's time, please.
How long would it take you to get the equipment in?
The latest I can get, the guarantee on the poles, and that's the only, I can have the light fixtures probably Monday. The poles are eight weeks is what they'll guarantee. I think we can have them inside of six weeks, once you place the order, but that's as early as we can get them, because they are concrete, they are spun, they're made when you order them. They don't sit on the yard.
When's your season start, Jordan?
My first tournament, February eighteenth, and I'll have terms thereafter. The rec ball season, the first game, will be a week after spring break, which is April the ninth.
So you're on a tight schedule.
Yes.
I will say that, I think it was probably four years ago now, maybe even five, we changed the high school baseball field in Tattinell County, and they had the same issue. It was this time of the year when they started, and we took those poles down and put new poles up during baseball season, high school baseball season, and they played right through it. It's not what you'd like to do, but, and then we take a lot of coordination with Mr. Sasser about, certainly when we have equipment, your crane and all on the field, they can't be out practicing, but we would be doing that during the day anyway, and then we'd have to make sure we had everything safe, off and closed up before the kids should go. This would save a great deal of repairs that we spend every year, if there is that direct.
Yes, sir.
Which one are you recommending?
Number four.
Number four.
Four.
Make a motion. We recommend the alternative number four.
Have a second. I'll second. All in favor of I signify an aye?
Aye.
Now, here, three ayes. Okay. Okay. Okay, that concludes our agenda. I know there's some old folks in the school board is here, so. Y'all have anything you want to say?
I don't know. What was the figure on that?
What kind of bid that fellow gave on that? Are you allowed to say?
Yeah, it was eighty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
What's that?
It says seventy-four thousand, nine fifty-nine.
Mine says eighty-five, two hundred and eighty.
What's the bid? They, they have a
What's the bid?
What's your bid? We got two different numbers. Here it is, right here, the eighty-five in Carter.
He's got seventy-four's over here on this one. I got eighty-five.
Seventy-four of them.
Seventy-four and ninety dollars.
Going low. Fifty-eight thousand.
Did you see the cell phone? No, that's wrong. I'll get it later.
That's all they gave me.
I couldn't see it.
So it's fifty-eight?
I knew we went through that whole conversation, nobody ever mentioned money.
I got one more question, though. I missed the last couple of meetings and, I wanted to know about that county health insurance. How many bids did they take on that and who got it? The county, well, what, we'd have to have Mr. Larson in here, but Blue Cross Blue Shield got it. Al Ortell was the, the consultant we had, and they consulted with, I know, United and Blue Cross, and they had a couple of other companies. They investigated every company that does business in this part of, in our area, and they compared them all. So we'd have to have one of those folks here to, to go over that with you, but that's.
Dana, they have to take the bid on that, you just.
No, you have to take Dana out of the equation. Dana's just a local broker that hand, comes in and talks to our people. The company is Blue Cross Blue Shield, and United was, so United was, now, Crystal may have to back me up on some of this, but United Healthcare was going to increase their premium by 20%. And then they were going to, well, can you call a doctor? The chairman just fell out over here.
Get the insurance.
But they, they were going to increase it by 20% and also raise their deductibles and their copays. And it was, and the employee would have had to pay 100 and something dollars out of their paycheck. What was that, Crystal?
About 250 a month.
Employees would have, if we'd have stayed with United, they, it would have cost our employees 250 a month. The plan that we've got, we, we pay it all. It's 500.
19308 per person.
49308 per person. We were paying 625 with United. So we got less money and better coverage. Our employees, the only thing that changed on our employees, I know everybody's got numbers all over the field, but they, they failed to get the right answers, they increased the deductible by $1,000. We were paying 5,000 with United, it's 6,000 with Blue Cross Blue Shield. But United was going to go up anyway. So our employees would have really been in bad shape if we'd have left our insurance like it was. By us hiring a consultant and getting that person to investigate what we needed, we saved a ton of money. And the employees got a better deal than they would have had if we'd have stayed with the United. I don't know what else to say.
Well, my main thing is, did they have to bid it out, or they just, were they able to just?
They bid it out themselves. They went through that process themselves. We didn't bid it out, we hired somebody to do all of that. And Dana didn't get to make the call. She didn't make the call, Al Ortell made the call, but he consulted with Dana, and they, they talked about different things that we needed in our policy that I had talked to them about. So it turned out to be extremely good for us. Now, just to let you know, I got an email today from ACCG, and Brantley County was paying like 11 or, a million, two or three for their insurance, and we're paying, what? What are we paying a year for the county's cost?
I don't have that number written right now.
It's, we saved 160 something thousand dollars. But they're getting killed with it because now they're wanting to know what to do. So they're going to, you know, we're going to be sending them our information and letting them contact Mr. Ortell in, in Kennesaw, Georgia, so he can help them save money. So, good question.
Good, there's an answer question. If one of you fellows went to the hospital, you'd have $6,000 deductible?
It's according, if you, if you go into the hospital for a major operation, and you're going to be in there over three days, the insurance kicks in. Crystal, you're going to have to help me in for this if you know anything about it. If you go in for outpatient, you're right, you get the cost upfront. If you go in for less than three days, the cost is upfront. But you're still going to have the cost, no matter which policy you're with, it's just according to when you pay it. Now, if they, if I went in the hospital, because you said one of us guys, and I was going to stay less than three days, they'd charge me $6,000. But I'd say, I can't pay $6,000 right now, and they'd do like they do everybody else. They'd say, well, you can just pay so much a month. They would do that regardless of which insurance policy you have.
State Farm just went up on mine from 500 to 1,000.
Yeah.
And, and they gave me the option of, if I want to keep the 500 dollars, it cost me 118 dollars a year, which is about, little over, about 11 dollars. I would have, I'd better off to keep the 500, because it would take five years.
Well, it.
The difference.
Well, the way they explained it to me, insurance is now fluid, it changes daily. And I really hate that, but, you know, that's what they told me.
I've never heard of a $6,000 deductible. You know, with a big plan, with.
Some of it, we have some with $10,000 deductible.
I've been out with him a long time, I've been out to the line, I just feel like it blew my mind when you said $6,000.
But last year, it was $5,000.
That fellow think, oh, maybe we ain't getting it.
Well, you just, you, you can't get sick, you got to stay with it.
It's not the deductible, it's total out of pocket.
It's total out of pocket. It's not the deductible, it's the total out of pocket.
Okay, well, that's a different story, that's a different story there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a different story there.
Yeah. Total out of pocket. That's the reason I said you probably need to talk to Mr. Ortell.
That's a different story there.
I'm thinking anyway, I would have already found out if you had to bid that thing out. I don't know, I want to know if you had to.
We could have, but we probably wouldn't have got as good a deal because we didn't know what we'd do.
Were you supposed to, or did you?
Didn't have to.
Didn't have to, okay. Well, I want to know. Anybody else got anything?
You're going back to the tax on the school?
It ain't on the gym.
It ain't on the gym?
No, sir.
When you going to put it on?
We got the whole three public meetings.
Well, you discarded the first one Tuesday, so this is the second.
We all were ahead too, didn't we? No?
We have three public hearings, it'll be in the paper.
Does it go in?
It's going to be in the paper before it happens or after?
Before.
Okay. Make your time, going to have one for me.
Anybody else got anything to say?
I'd like to say that, and address this to Mr. Christian, I think, and I hope it's constructive. And I'm a new kid on the block, I don't understand a lot of this, okay? But the policy you talked about on employees and Mr. Griffin's reprimand, you didn't have any kind of policy in place, if nobody understood, yet he got a reprimand. And the other thing is, it's good to have a budget, but don't always, and I address this to Mr. Katie too, don't always penalize the average worker to get your budget in line. There's other ways to get a budget in line, other than penalizing the little man on the toilet.
Yes, sir.
But you've done some good, good things, but those two things I was concerned about.
Thank you for your comment, we appreciate it. Yes, sir.
One more thing. If you sold it scrap or junk, are you supposed to get it running before you leave?
Hey, I, I wasn't, I wasn't there, when I, when I looked at that piece of equipment, I would have, I would have bet anything in the world that it would never run again.
Well, you sold it though.
I didn't sell it.
Well, Mr. Griffin sold it.
Right.
As was. But he didn't charge for the labor of getting that motor running.
You're, you're exactly right.
Well, there, the thing wasn't quite sold as junk, you have it running when you lose it.
You're correct. But I, I wasn't aware of that.
So I mean, if it was running, motor running.
I'd love to say that there was, it was done correctly, but it wasn't.
Well, once you get a motor running, something's more valuable. It may not be good, but it's still more valuable.
You got a good point.
I know it's out of time now, but, still.
Well, that's the reason why I'm glad y'all come, because we really appreciate your input. And I've had a hard time getting this one over here to come back, but I'm glad that he's here tonight.
Which one, one you got, Big Mac?
Yeah.
Is anything else?
Do we need a spokesperson for the tax bill about people?
It's better to have, it's the better to have a spokesperson.
Yes. Which one y'all will need for?
Two. Now, you need to, you need to find you somebody within your group.
We can use Frank.
See Frank? If nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.